Calling the Planning, Zoning and Building Committee to order. Roll call, please.
Alderman Sorrentino.
Here.
Alderman Jacob.
Here.
Alderman Eugene Wesley.
Here.
Alderman Roy Wesley. Alderman Catalano.
Here.
Alderman Sizmarski. Alderman Messina.
Here.
Alderman Woods.
Here.
We have a quorum. Next, approval of minutes of November 12th, 2020, Planning, Zoning and Building Committee minutes.
I'm making motion approve.
We have a second.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? That passes. Report and recommendation, case number CDC-2021-02, text amendment to the sign code to allow off-premises billboards and signs. Mr. Cage?
Yes, thank you, Chairman. So, this is a text amendment request. As you know, we have other requests like variance, et cetera. The text amendment is to amend the entire text of the, in some cases, the UDO, in this case of the sign ordinance. And it's to allow off-premise billboard signs. Currently, the sign code does not allow that. This did go to CDC meeting, and it was recommended denial, I believe, three to one. If there are any questions, I'd be happy to answer them.
Mayor?
Yeah, Ed, if I understand this right, this is a text amendment that would open it up to all kinds of billboards. I know we have like four spots here that would open up. I heard there might be a fifth possibly.
Mr. Cage?
Yes, the applicants proposed a text amendment that would kind of limit the locations, so to speak. Main locations obviously being along the I-390 Elgin-O'Hare corridor. And I think we had four or five locations, possible locations along that, that would meet the criteria that the applicant provided.
Continue, Mayor.
Yeah, so basically, if we pass this text amendment, we're going to open up to all kinds of billboards. We've never really been for many billboards, or none at all, but I'm just...
Mr. Cage?
Correct. Yes, I think that's, staff's concern is that, you know, with any, and kind of just jumping back, when we're looking at, you know, a specific request of variance or something that's site-specific, obviously, you're just looking at one request. A text amendment obviously has a larger impact. And even though, you know, we're looking at one, you know, the applicant is looking at one particular location of the Elgin-O'Hare, right, I-390, it could allow other billboards to meet that criteria to go in those other locations. So, yes, you're correct.
Alderman Eugene Wesley?
So, my question, I agree with the mayor on this one, but what makes him think that they would get IDOT approval to put them along I-390?
Okay.
I believe in the applicant's paperwork, they have already contacted that group, and they've had those discussions. So, they, I don't want to speak on their behalf, but certainly what I've heard and what I've seen is that they've entered those discussions.
So, may I do a follow-up?
Yeah, go ahead.
So, then they could go right over the border and ask Elk Grove to put them up there. So, I mean, I, that complete, because it's along I-390, so.
I mean, that's...
Right.
Yeah, that, to answer your question, Alderman Wesley, yes, there's...
Okay.
That's another option, correct.
All right. Do we have any other questions? Take a roll call, please.
No motion yet.
Oh, I'm sorry. I'd make the motion to deny, well...
It has to be an affirmative.
Yeah, yeah, I'm sorry. I'd make a motion to approve the text amendment, CDC-2021-02, to the sign code to allow off-premises billboards and signs. Do we have a second?
Second.
Roll call, please.
Alderman Sorrentino.
No.
Alderman Jacob.
No.
Alderman Eugene Wesley.
No.
Alderman Catalano.
No.
Alderman Messina.
No.
Alderman Woods.
No.
That passes. Items to be considered at...
That fails.
Or, that failed. Sorry. Items to be considered at future meetings. Okay, there being none, I make a motion to adjourn.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? We are adjourned.
I'd like to call the order, the Public Works Committee. Minutetaker, take note of the same council members present. I need approval of the minutes of March 25th, 2021, Public Works Committee meeting. Have a second?
Second.
Any corrections to the minutes? If they are none, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Motion carries. Next is a report and recommendation, a presentation from Williams Architects on the City of Wooddale Public Works Department Facility Improvement Concept Plan. Director Lang?
Thank you, Chairman. Good evening, everyone. Tonight is a very exciting night as we present the concept plan for the Public Works Facility Improvement Project. This is the culmination of many months and years of exploring opportunities and planning and coordination between virtually every department of the city, as well as our consultants, Williams Architects and Frederick Quinn Corporation. It's important to keep in mind as we go through the plans that this is very high level at this point, so it's more about spaces and general site layout than it is about, you know, the exact location of doors and walls and such. Those details and many more will be worked out during the next phase, which is the development of the final design. So, without further ado, I will throw it over to Mark Bushhouse from Williams Architects.
Thank you, appreciate your time this evening. It's great to get the mask off anyhow. All right, so, a quick overview of what we're going to talk about. Again, just good to remind everybody a little bit about the project history as you began to introduce, review project goals that we see that this concept can meet. We'll talk a bit about some of the space programming needs and assessment that we did, really did the math on this one. And then from there, the conceptual designs that we explored with your staff and other, all the folks involved here to look at that. We ended up on one basic concept we think is a good starting point for, to head off and do the rest of the design. And then we can review then the costs that go with that, that Frederick Quinn Construction Management did to provide on this project for us. And from there, look at a project schedule and talk about how this project could move forward and get completed. And of course, questions and answers at the end, but if there's anything anywhere along the way, please don't hesitate to interrupt, glad to, glad to talk about anything. So, history of the project, just as Alan said, we, actually, you picked us up in 2017. Boy, how time flies. We did initial planning process for you back then. However, as that process went through, at that point in time, the solid property was not available, so we were, had the difficult reality that you'd have to go build an all-new facility somewhere else. And back four years ago, that was a good $24 million project, which reasonably kind of hit a wall. And so, that got put on hold, and then thankfully, adjacent property was identified, and the board, council and staff moved on it and picked up the property just to the north, which was a real game changer, the solid property. And then you brought us back in, and we've been doing some planning in '20 and '21 here to really look at these ideas and see now what the options are with this, with this property. And with that, what kind of goals can we achieve here? The great news is, we now have the property and facilities to bring all your departments together, all your divisions, I should say, of Public Works, able to work in a good coordinated fashion. We can provide indoor tempered heated spaces for all the vehicles and equipment that really need that. And then, of course, I've been working through and looking at workflow and operations to improve efficiency. And then, of course, you getting the solid building as part of the deal, and that's turning out to be a very good purchase and a very good part of the project that we can rework. Then the existing Public Works building itself, while it's a good, tough, durable building, it certainly has had a lot of years of use, and some cleanup and fix-up would certainly help it, and it can be repurposed at a, at a very good price. And then, of course, goals of reutilizing as much as possible to keep prices down, get efficiencies improved, be sure we think about the future, which we did. And then, at the old site, you can take down the building and get some more green space, which is always a plus. And then on this project, on the solid property, our planning is already beginning to look at opportunities to see if we can provide additional green space, or maybe a regional stormwater detention area that could help further improvements or development in the area if possible, and even some community garden opportunities if that's something the city is interested in. So, a lot of good goals here, and then the process that we went through, we give you charts you can't read because it looks very impressive. So, we spent a lot of time with Alan and his staff figuring out every vehicle, every piece of equipment, all the people that are coming in, who's staying, went through and did an analysis of what needed to be inside, what could just be in covered space, what could sit outdoors, and all the people and equipment and storage they went through. So, just a very solid detailed process to add all those things up and know all the things that are needed now and projecting to the future of vehicles and equipment that are likely to be needed. Then from there, we go into space programs, again, things you can't read, hopefully you're very impressed. So, we go through and do a lot of numbers and calculations, looking at the, all the rooms and spaces that are needed to house every piece of equipment, all mechanical systems, everything you need to fit. And we even do a space program for the outdoors, because we know there's yard areas, there's storage bins, there's fuel islands, there's salt, and all those things that need to happen. So, we do a space programs to work up square footages from all of these things. Again, just very proven math, these things really, they hold their numbers as you work. And then from there, we took that and looked at the ideas we could work up, and we looked through, these are four that actually got this far. We looked at more, of course, and sketched around different ideas. We looked at just adding on to the existing building, but there were some zoning issues possibly there. We looked at, second down from the left, we did a floating building away from the solid, then third from, that is the, we did a building right up against the existing solid building. Fourth is a different shape with two drive aisles. And through this process, we are talking about constructibility, we're talking about efficiency of operations. Frederick Quinn is working at prices on these to compare their costs and constructabilities. And through all that process, working with staff, we, we're going to get to a final concept that we think right now makes a lot of sense. And there's a laser on this thing, if I can find the button. Oh, the green, there we go. So, again, this is your existing building and site. You've got a garage, you've got fleet area, you've got shops below, mezzanine above, and a really tiny little administration area there. You've got an old rundown salt area here that's not doing well. You've got some fueling that's in decent shape and needs some upgrades. Then here's the property that was just purchased recently. This has an existing building out that's offices, and currently has a very large, just beat-up yard back here. So, what we're thinking about is remodeling part of the solid building for offices, part of its storage, and part of its shop, crew areas, I should say, building a pre-engineered metal garage that has indoor parking for all the vehicles and equipment that need it, drive-through wash bay. And then we have like a covered area on the north here, where this is equipment and vehicles that need to be covered, but they don't have to be in heated space. So, this is less expensive to build a cover here. We're talking about relocating and doing a new salt dome that's the right size and in good condition, putting in some material storage bins with a little roof over it, keep them dry and ready to go for a winter time water breaks. And then this big green thing on the left here, this is space that has a number of possibilities. I'm sure we'll use some for stormwater detention. We can make it a larger stormwater detention and possibly can assist developments on properties around it. We could use this for some green space, and with this kind of green space, we may have some opportunities for some community garden, growing opportunities. So, again, all the ways that it's going to achieve that. We'll rework the drive between the buildings coming off the road, so circulation works well. The existing parking lot for solid now becomes staff and visitor parking going into the building. This building already has a great flow-through that can get staff through to the existing building or through a link we're thinking of building that will get you to the new building here. So, in the end, you've got a nice big L-shaped property, you've got the right size, right, right square footage, and it'll get you down the road a long way. Any questions on the site plan that I could answer? Yes?
Go ahead.
Just curious, why, why we wouldn't repurpose the existing garage that we have?
Oh, yes, it will continue to be reused. We're going to clean it up, and it will continue to operate as a good...
So, that's just an exp...
Go ahead.
That's just a part right here.
Okay, so that's just an expansion of the existing?
Yes, no expansion, that is just the existing in this area. That is...
Go ahead.
Unless I'm losing, maybe my hearing is misunderstood, is that not a bay, a new bay that you're constructing?
No, it is not. This is the actual...
No, the one above that you showed?
Oh, this is all new here.
Correct.
Yes, sorry.
Okay, so you're building, you're adding on to what we currently have to expand, that existing is not big enough?
Correct. Existing is not anywhere near big enough to house your vehicles.
Got you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Sorry for the confusion.
Go ahead, Alderman Jacob.
The old office space in the old building, is that all going to be moved over to the new building then, or?
Yes, all the administration will go to the new building, and this area can be repurposed to have the offices and meeting space for the fleet. They're in a ridiculously small little room right now that's got storage, and so it'll help them a great deal. Also, now the parking here can support people that are coming to see fleet and dropping off parts and pieces, so it's, it'll increase their efficiencies.
Okay, thank you.
Alderman Wesley?
Where's the fuel tanks going? Going to leave where they are?
I think we're going to leave them pretty much where they are. That's actually a good location. We can keep, do fencing and gates so that the school buses and police can still flow through there and, and get their fueling and not be, I'm sorry, not be ending up loose back in the yard where the Public Works equipment and, and storage is.
I thought at one time we were going to build this new facility and sell the old property. Wasn't that a discussion at one time? Maybe I missed that.
Not that I remember, but my apologies if it was.
Mayor?
Go ahead. Mayor? No.
Okay. Go ahead. Go ahead.
Alderman Wesley, correct, but that was way back in like 2017, when we first started examining different options. One thought was to build a brand-new facility, and then we would be able to sell I-720, and that ended up being way, way, way too expensive, even with selling the current building. In this current scenario, because we were lucky enough to get the, the site next door, we're able to save a significant amount of money just by rehabbing our, our current I-720.
Any other questions? I have one as far as the, the salt dome, so we are going to expand that, because I know over the years, we've been having issues with our storage, so that's going to be a bigger capacity, I imagine, right?
Yes, it'll be a larger capacity. The current place you store salt in is seeing much better days. It's in a tough spot, the salt's been hard on it, and it's been filled as full as it can be, which tends to hurt it a little bit. So, yes, we're talking, looking at getting a purpose-built salt structure in the back corner here that will be a part of a good flow for the trucks.
Continue. Alderman Jacob, go ahead.
What, what'll happen to the old salt where we keep the salt? Is that just going to be torn down for parking?
Yeah, more parking, right.
Okay, thanks.
Moving on, now the, the floor plans have turned 90 degrees, so north is now to your right. This is the outline of the existing Public Works building. So, again, this is the fleet repair area. We're just going to clean up and give them one more bay right now that's used for storage, so they will actually gain a bay for fleet repairs, which is great to help deal with increased vehicles that have happened over the years. So, that, that's very, and again, it's in a perfect spot, so that's just great news. The existing story, fleet area and garage will be just cleaned up and new roof and, you know, HVACs if we have to, to make that clean up and work well. The area here is the zone under the mezzanine, and there are scattering of shops and storage areas, and this is going to be reworked a small degree so we can bring the water department over, and they can have their own shop now. Other areas will be diminished a bit because we don't need as much storage here, because you've got area at the solid building now to make up for that. And again, like I said, what has been the administration zone now will now turn into a couple offices and meeting space for the fleet group to be able to receive people coming in and meet and do their job. Any questions on, on the repurposing of the existing?
Go ahead, Mayor.
So, the building you said was coming down, the utilities building, you're talking about the one on commercial, right?
Correct, yeah. Thank you. Anything else on...
Alderman Jacob.
Where the, in the old buildings where the trucks used to park, don't we have some serious issues that we kind of held off on fixing with the concrete, or? I remember we had some issues over there, and I can't remember exactly what we were doing with that.
There are some issues with the trench drain that runs through the middle. We did some repairs to it within the last year, but that's something that's going to be addressed as part of this larger project. Also, also there was issues with the roofing. We made some repairs around the skylights, but there is still some, some openings that are going to need to be, it's, it's going to require a brand-new roof likely.
Anything else I can answer on, on this one? All right. Here is the solid building here, and again, some very good things are true about this building. This zone here, as it's outlined, this was in, a first phase of this building, and then this piece was in addition sometime later. So, the great reality is that this piece here is a much newer piece, it's in great condition, and it has a public entrance, it has a lobby, it has meeting rooms, good rooms for your staff to work in. As you can see, these dark walls are the walls where some changes are happening, and there aren't many of them. So, the great news is, this is significantly laid out in a way that we can repurpose it to be administration and support spaces for the Public Works. And this area then to the east, this zone is a maze right now, tiny little offices and very old build-outs. We're going to clean that all out, and the eastern half of it's going to be a great slab-on-grade storage zone for the city, whatever banker's boxes or storage you might need for, for the city, or whatever Public Works might need, or just basically future space if you need that. And then this zone here, we're going to be reworked, so we have lockers, toilets and showers, and then a subdivisible space that can be a lunchroom, training room, meeting room for Public Works staff. This will be really a crucial space when you have snow events and so forth, so people can come in and clean up, stay and, and get something to eat as they come and go, as they work those, those long hours. So, this building has turned out to be very good in its condition. Yes, it'll need some work. We're going to do some upgrades to HVAC. The eastern half will probably have some real changes, but again, this western piece, we're going to do further analysis of the rooftop units, and we might get another good 10 years out of them and be able to just continue using that. So, very good cost-effective reuse of this building. And you see a small link here that we're talking about that will get to the new garage. But before I go there, any questions on the solid building reuse?
Alderman Jacob, go ahead.
The space reset where we could do storage?
Yes, all this.
Would you be able to put, instead of having that vehicles outdoor on the new building, would you be able to put vehicles inside there, or is that too, I'm not familiar with the building?
It's a much lower roof, and the vehicles just could not fit.
Okay, okay.
Good question. Any other questions on this one? Okay, next one, this is the new pre-engineered garage we're talking about to house all the other vehicles that don't fit in your existing building. Nice flow-through design.
We have a question here. Alderman Messina, go ahead.
I'm sorry, I'm following along on the PDF. Could you step back a slide, please?
Sure.
So, now I was able to zoom in right where your, your mouse was.
Here, left, right?
Yeah, so there's a bunch of offices on the bottom there?
Here.
105, 109, 110, 113?
Yeah, those are...
Are those actually existing offices, or are those partition-paneled offices?
No, those are, I believe, our existing offices.
Okay. Do we know that? The reason I ask is I'm just looking at cost-effective ways to minimize costs, I guess?
Right, so leaving them is...
No offense, I know they, they deserve the nicest, biggest offices, but if they're not existing, we could put them in partition walls and save a lot more money.
That's a good point, but they are existing, so sadly would cost more money to...
Absolutely, okay. Just wanted to confirm. Thank you.
No, that's, that's good to know. So, back to, again, it's one-way drive aisle, big parking spaces for the big equipment that would park here. Then the, the roof of this area would extend out to the north and have a series of spaces where vehicles and equipment could park that doesn't need to be heated, but just out of the snow and UV light. And here's a zone where you can pull some trailers in to keep those, again, out of the snow and the rain, and they don't need to be heated either. Then here, on the traffic flow, we're going to talk about doing a wash bay that you can drive through, keep the vehicles clean, and then come inside and park. So, all good, efficient layouts and, and working well with how pre-engineered buildings can be built economically. Any questions I can answer here?
Alderman Jacob?
I know right now, like our police cars, they, we have a contract, then we have them washed. Are they going to be able to use this as well, or are we, is the police department going to continue to use?
Well, I'll just say, this is really designed for bigger vehicles, but not that you couldn't wash a car, but if you want.
Yeah, as Mark said, it very well could be used for police cars. I think, you know, I'm sure there was a reason they went to washing the police cars under contract as is, but that's, that's an option for the future, absolutely.
Mayor?
So, that canopy outside is basically similar to what's being built outside the police department right now, right?
Could be. Again, I don't know that project well enough to give the comparisons, but that looked like a simple outdoor cover as well. Okay. All right. Any more questions on, on these plan drawings? Okay, so next, obviously, there's a cost to this, and kudos to Frederick Quinn and Fred and his team for the work they did to price all these options up. And this, he has an entire notebook for all of this, so I told him we probably didn't want to go through all that tonight. So, instead, we'll just give you the highlights here of, to build, to build the buildings, remodel the, the existing solid building, site work, contingency, overhead profit, things like that for everybody involved. Building the buildings looks like about $10.5 million. And then there's what we call soft costs, which is clean things up, furnishing, fixtures, the equipment, things that are loose within the building, some technology, hiring your architect and engineer, surveying, construction, testing, buying insurance. That adds another $1,285. So, bottom, turnkey number, all in, other than, of course, you having purchased the property, is $11,840,000. So, not a small number. However, as Jeff was saying, we looked at this number four years ago, and it was 24 million, and if you built it now, it'd probably be 27 million. So, again, you know, is it a lot of money? Yes, it is, but thankfully, it's an incredibly less number than, than it was with, with other options. So, we're, anything I can answer here about costs? Yeah, it's kind of hard to know, yeah, it's a lot. But then schedule, if the city is, would like to have this facility completed, the bottom line to all of this is, it can be done by November of next year. And the goal is, if you say, let's get going, Quinn, Frederick Quinn and us would prepare contracts for staff and attorney approval, yours, of course, approval as well, to get us going on full design, and they would be doing the cost estimating and construction scheduling and sequencing with us as we're drawing building, drawing the building. We'd get that out to bid, and I believe the solid people could potentially move out in November, and then we would go right in, and Frederick Quinn and their trade contractors would start working on the existing solid building, get that remodeled over the winter. When spring hits of '22, we start building the pre-engineered metal building for the garage on the solid property, get that site work done. As that gets into summer or late summer, now your staff can move over there, because now they've got a place to go. And now we would come back and we'd do the fix-up and minor remodelings to your existing building, get that cleaned up, and like I said, by likely November of '22, they can settle into their new facility and go to work.
Alderman Wesley?
So, I'll make a motion to move forward.
Second. Alderman Messina?
So, I just wanted to make sure I had the numbers right, because I am pretty positive at some point in the future we'll be questioned, for those watching from home. When we looked at this a few years ago, we had, it was about 24 million? Did I hear correctly?
Yeah, it was a range, but that's...
About, about, okay.
Yeah.
And then if we were to build completely new, about 21 million?
No, about 27 million. It would go up $3 million with inflation between 2000, beginning of 2018 till when we're going to bid this out.
Okay. Great, thank you.
Sure.
Mayor?
So the big question is, I see Brad's ready to go.
Yeah, I've been waiting for you.
Mr.-
Where the money, where the money's coming from? We already know that the purchase of the property was through the TIF, so I'm sure you guys got a great explanation.
Yeah, let me just hop in real quick before Brad does his thing, but from council perspective tonight, we are looking for, you know, direction to proceed with this concept plan, and then Brad's going to come in and kind of share some high-level finance and get some input on some of the high-level finance.
Okay. Alderman Jacob.
What was the purchase price that we paid for the facility? $4 million? Okay. And then during that construction phase, is that, how is that going to inconvenience the Public Works now? I mean, where are they going to park their trucks in the meantime?
Good question. We'll work with Frederick Quinn on that, how to maintain operations throughout. We're confident that can be done, because the great news is you have that solid building and that big site that we can work on while they remain unaffected where they are. And then when that's done, you can shift a lot of operations over to that new site, pack people in a little bit there, but, again, they'll have more room than they do now. Let that get finished up, and then, while they're over there, we'll clean up the existing building, and then they'll expand back.
Okay, thank you.
Alderman Woods?
Yeah, I just want to confirm, maybe that's what you're going to do, Jeff. What we're passing, we're just passing to move to final drawings, not approving the actual contract, because to the point you made earlier, I can't read 90% of what's on that document, so.
Fine.
I like the concept. I like to match up the pictures with the numbers.
Manager Murmas, go ahead.
Yeah, Alderman Woods, correct. We're just presenting this concept plan, and then we'll get a separate approval to move further along, further construct, our design documents and whatnot. Going back to what Alderman Jacob, the question he raised, the ironic thing about it is the inconvenience of the construction is probably not as much of an inconvenience as current Public Works state of affairs. It's been known for a long time, with all the remote buildings that are inefficient, old outdated materials and efficiencies, the construction interference will probably be welcome by all the guys, and it won't be as bad as what they currently operate under.
Mr. Wilson, you have a few questions?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Yeah, I could be raised with more questions, but, yeah, so the, kind of the, what, the $12 million question is how are we going to pay for this? The CIP this year, we had spread it out from fiscal year '22 all the way out to fiscal year '25. Obviously, this timeline's a much more accelerated timeline. Additionally, you may recall, there's a couple projects going on elsewhere within the TIF district, as well as perhaps a little bit to the east of the TIF district. That's going to require some funding. So our best cost estimates, taking into account the Public Works building and those other projects, is about $20 million. At the current time, the TIF is producing about $2.5 to $3 million a year. Doing some simple math, it would take about seven years to do all of that. Just guessing about the Public Works state of affairs and the other projects, that's not really a timeline, we want to get it done sooner than that. So we're going to have to look into perhaps a little more aggressive funding methodologies to, to get all this done in a more timely manner for the city and everybody. We have ran some preliminary numbers, and there is capacity to do that, should we want to go that route. Just, again, not trying to throw cold water on everything, but just want to be clear that if we want to get all of this and everything else to the east done in a timely and more expedited manner, it's going to be not pay-as-you-go, as we typically like to do things. It will be a little bit more of an aggressive approach to funding.
Mayor, go ahead.
Just so everyone's clear, because, so, we're looking at almost $12 million for the building. Brad just said $20 million, $20 million is including everything that's going on in the TIF. So for everybody watching at home, this is not a $20 million building, it's a $12 million building. So I just-
Plus the four.
It's 15.8 million total.
It's, let's say, $60 million-
Roger.
-versus $27 million. I just, just so people don't get confused. I know the numbers, but I just-
Go ahead.
No, I was just going to say that, yeah, we, as Manager Murmas said, you know, are certainly not looking for a final decision on any of this tonight, but just pointing out the fact that, you know, to get these things done in the expedited manner that I think everybody wants to, we're going to have to investigate a little bit of a different methodology to approach it, so.
Okay, any more questions? If there are none, roll call, please. We have a motion in a second to continue with the concept.
Do we have a motion in a second?
Yes.
Alderman Sorrentino?
Yes.
Alderman Jacob?
Yes.
Alderman Eugene Wesley?
Yes.
Alderman Catalano?
Yes.
Alderman Messina?
Yes.
Alderman Woods?
Yes.
Motion carries. Okay, next is approval of an agreement with Osceanta Landscaping for the Veterans Memorial Landscaping Re-Rev-ation, in the amount not to exceed $159,982. Any questions in that? We don't have a presentation on that, do we? But any questions? Messina, you got a question? I'm sorry. Oh, oh. If there are none, a roll call on that, please.
We need a motion.
Oh, I'm sorry, I'll make the motion. Second. Second, okay. Roll call, please.
Alderman Sorrentino?
Yes.
Alderman Jacob?
Yes.
Alderman Eugene Wesley?
Yes.
Alderman Catalano?
Yes.
Alderman Messina?
Yes.
Alderman Woods?
Yes.
Okay, next is direction on ComEd electrical panel project at Veterans Memorial and Medallion Lighting, and we do have a presentation on that. Go ahead, Director Lang.
Thank you, Chairman. Staying on that note of the Veterans Memorial Landscaping Project, you mentioned back in January when the concept was being presented that we would have to do something about the electrical utility that's in the area directly to the south of the existing monument. You see here, we have about a five-foot, five-eighth foot-high panel with some timbers that has the ComEd meter, the electrical panel, the timer for the lighting and the irrigation as well. So we have a couple options that we can present to you tonight. Option one would be to relocate the panel to the adjacent building. You see a price tag there, $17,689 was the low proposal we had for this work. That would open up to the, as the concept was presented, you would not see any equipment. There is a gas meter as well as an irrigation meter, but that's low enough that it would be screened by this proposed plant material here. Another option would be to enclose it in a new control box, similar to what's at the corner by the clock tower. This is slightly lower than what's the existing panel that's out there. This is about, I think, 48 inches high, maybe slightly higher, if it's sitting on a concrete pad. That comes with a price tag of $18,132 was the low proposal. The third option, if we wanted to go that route, would be to leave the existing panel as is in an attempt to screen it with some bushes or some arborities, like the evergreen tree. I pulled these off the internet here. They're slightly shorter than what is out there, so it's likely that, you know, two feet of the panel that's out there now would be sticking up and in view, but this would be the idea to try to, try to screen it, and that cost would be negligible, as we would just include that in the proposed project and we'll just approve. So we are looking for direction as to which option the council would like.
Alderman Messina?
I'd like to make a motion to move with option three.
Second.
Second.
Any questions? Alderman Woods?
Yeah, I just have to comment on some of the guys that brought it up, because it wasn't any other drawings, but I knew it was there. So first, Wyatt's left off as a dangling participle, separate it from the project when it's really part of the project. We rush in to wipe everything out to make everything like a vignette, so you can drive by and see it. And then we leave the electric meter in the middle of nowhere and have to deal with it later. I mean, hopefully, you can bury it in the landscaping.
Director Lang.
Just the secrecy in this, that didn't make any sense to me.
Just to address your point, when I was left off the older project, we felt it was a little bit outside of the scope, is the kind of contractor that we're seeking for landscaping work. Electrical work wouldn't really be in their purview, so we decided to try to move forward, you know, meet with ComEd, it's their meter out there to see what could be done to lower the profile or otherwise move it. They pretty much wiped their hands of the whole deal, so we sought other options from contractors to move it up ourselves.
Right, it still could have been part of the discussion with a placeholder and a dollar amount. I mean, it's, it's a big piece of the puzzle. That's all I'm saying, so. Hopefully, you can blend it with the landscaping if that works. I don't know, it's a pretty ugly-looking piece of hardware over there, so, I mean, you'd have to wrap that thing 360, but you still have to make it accessible, right? So, I don't know. From the inside, that's close to the walkway, you're going to see that thing. I just don't see how you're going to make it nice based on all the money you're spending over there.
From the street view, it doesn't really block the medallions either direction?
No, it doesn't.
Okay.
It wouldn't block the medallions, but you would see it, it's in view of the existing monument from the street. So here is what the proposed was from that, pretty much that same view. So you would see that panel sticking up slightly. You would have to screen it with some taller shrubbery.
Okay. Could you paint it?